Good evening. We're up to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council, yes, on Monday and on Tuesday. If anybody would like to attend, they are posted as a back. Before we go any farther, we're going to have you come on and please say please for a moment. Our voting rights is to the right, and our nation's citizens, and to the Republic of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first off is community notes. I can give you notes at eight nine where if somebody has something they would like to say that is not already scheduled to be discussed tonight, it's not on the agenda, then I'll be trying to do it. And I would just ask, if you have a community note, please come report him, tell us who you are, and what you'd like to say. Anybody with community notes?
Just come back in here on behalf of the South End Association. We'd like to invite everyone tomorrow night at Green Street Park, wherever everybody knows it's a Sherman Hill Park, or South End Skate Park, from five to seven P M. We have the annual South End Festival National Night Out. It's all free, it's free barbecue, it's going to be live entertainment by the Mayo Troops Trio, and we're going to have police and fire displays, Delta is going to bring down an ambulance, so kids can check out the ambulance, there's going to be all kinds of games, plus there's also kinds of booths of just different community groups that come down and receive information about the area. Again, it's at the Green Street Park tomorrow night, from five to seven P M.
Great, thank you. Well, yes, for community notes, it's not by your made it or reevaluated, is it?
Well...
If it is, we're going to put you on.
Okay, yeah. My name's George Weber, thirty percent anyway. My commentary is about the coverage in the media. The local newspaper is in fact the Waterville Sentinel. And if anybody read the article about the last meeting we had here, did anybody have the feeling that it was scrubbed? It said fifty people were here, there were twenty in the back row. There was no mention of people who spoke, made good points, not myself included because I usually talk tough off the cuff. But I really have to encourage the Sentinel to be more forthcoming in how they cover this. I see Amy is here tonight. I actually got asked by the Sentinel to cease and desist sending emails to the reporter and to the editor. They said, why don't you write a letter to the editor? I wrote back, you're the editor, I just did. I really was troubled. And what I think, the person that was here that wrote the article, I get a feeling, it got whitewashed when, because, I mean, there were cameras here, and there was a lot of good things said, a lot of good points made, which were not put down and not given to the public. So, as, in the community spirit, okay, I would ask that the Sentinel be, you know, more precise in their reporting, even if they don't like what they're hearing. The idea that people were cheering, and it was like a cadet's graduation, and hats were going up, and, you know, I mean, it was rah rah. And there was a certain disdain shown by some of the councilors, like, you know, hmm. And then after an hour and forty-five minutes of testimony in favor of what you did, but ten seconds it took to go, that, that was really an insult to all of us that made the effort to be here. And it's, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
And I appreciate the comments, but I just want to say in fairness to the paper, I think we had a guest reporter who normally covers Franklin County, and was trying to upload an article from far away. So, you know, someone who's not necessarily into the local paper.
And I suspect she had a dead long, and had enough time to write what happened, and she had to just...
Anybody else for community notes? If this has anything to do with the budget, or anything to do with reeval, or anything to do with additions that I go to wrap up with?
Okay. Julian Payne Worthfite, this, but, no, this is... I was actually wanting to bring this issue up a few meetings ago, and with all the press, the news in the paper regards police issues throughout the country. I felt very proud that Waterville hasn't made the news in any way like that. And, no, I mean, it's a big achievement of things going on. And I kept thinking about our police force, and how, you know, I was kind of trying to think how they would respond, and how people of ethnicity would be treated in this city. And I thought, yeah, they would be fair, and they would respect all lives. And I thought that was a really good achievement for all the things hit in the paper, and I just wanted to say I think they do a pretty good job, so, thank you to the police force.
Anybody else with community notes? All right, we'll move on to group on the present agenda, so a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Seven.
All those in favor? All right, unfinished business here, order one twenty-two oh one six.
Two three by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
In order providing for appropriation of TIF funds for Hathaway Creative Center.
Two two dot.
Second.
Mike, do you want to just give an explanation again, to people in the room, of what this is and how this was set aside?
Right. I don't know if any of you kept your maps from the last time we did pass it out, from the last agenda, and Paul Boghossian is here to help me, if I need to clarify anything. Essentially, when the Hathaway complex was developed, we created, the city created a TIF, and some of the money from that TIF could be put in a reserve account, which we designated that mine for improvements to the intersection, for pedestrian crossings, or other enhancements for and around the mill, parking, sidewalks, lighting, other things like that were mentioned when the TIF was first set up. So, the request has come in from Mr. Boghossian and Mr. Deeman, to be able to use some of that money that we're holding, to create new parking areas around the Hathaway, which I know are very much needed, as they continue to develop the other two buildings. I think the parking is probably adequate for the one building you have, pretty much, but the other two buildings, which of course people get developed, and the value gets increased, so anything we can do to help them have more parking, I think is a good idea.
And the parking spot is actually owned by the city, correct? Or, at least one of them?
Well, the parking lot, used to be the old Lily baseball field, the Lockwood parking lot, is owned by the city, we lease it to them for a period, we've leased it for a period of ninety-nine years. But the parking they're talking about is separate from that, Lockwood. Some of it is on the same side of the street as that parking lot you mentioned, and some of it is on the mill side of the street.
I know, my last phone call was to your asking for parking, it was going to be helpful for the next phase of that Creative Center, is that what this, will this enable that next phase?
I'll let you handle that.
Sure. Thank you folks, Paul Boghossian, in case you didn't know. We've actually, over the last two years, been on a parking lot buying binge substantially because unbeknownst to most people in this room, a third of the Hathaway parking lot is owned by Central Main Power, and we lease it from them. They retain the rights to take some of it, should they deem it necessary. And so what happens is, when we went to refinance the Hathaway two years ago, two years ago Thanksgiving, the bank said, don't even think those one hundred and seventy-one spaces that you leased from Central Main Power even exist, because as far as we're concerned, they're going to take it all tomorrow. Whether they would or not is irrelevant to the banking community. So, in the last two years, I've had blinders on and said, okay, I need to replace one hundred and seventy-one spaces. And over the last ninety days, I've been able to do that by buying two parcels, and you have the maps that show the two parcels. And so what we're attempting to do is to, we've already bought those parcels, we are with, when we improve them to turn them into parking lots, one is a home at the moment, and the other is just a field. When we improve them, we would like to be able to use TIF funds in order to be able to make those improvements to the, we'd like to be able to use the TIF funds to acquire them, and to make the improvements to turn them into parking. In one of the properties immediately adjacent to the river, and we're proposing to not pave it now, but to put up, put some picnic tables, and improve the kayak launch area, and just make it more aesthetic, that's kind of an amenity for, I mean, principally, it would be for the people that live and work in the Hathaway, but there's something that would prevent fishermen, or fisherwomen, or kayakers to use those, to use that sort of stuff. So, the request is to be able to use the TIF funds to be able to acquire properties, two of which we've already acquired, and to improve them when it comes, when and if it becomes necessary to turn them into parking. As far as the banks are concerned, as I said, that CMP lot doesn't exist, and we don't necessarily need to pave the new land at this juncture, we just need to show that we have it, have it in our best pocket, so that in a very short period of time, it could be parking if we ever needed to. If CMP said, nope, we're going to take that whole parking lot away from you, we could in fairly short order turn those other parcels into parking. Hope that answers the question.
Well, thank you for all the work, Mike. Every time I go there, I'm amazed at what you're going to do to that building, and really excited to see you.
Thank you, thank you. I, I mean, if I can editorialize just a little bit, I personally have been at this for twelve years, doesn't feel, it feels like, it doesn't feel that long, but it's been twelve years, and our investors have been at this for ten of those twelve years, and none of them, including myself, has made a nickel on that project yet. So, I just, it's important to recognize that it's a, it's a, it's a great asset, it's a great asset for us, it's a great asset for the community, but to date, it hasn't been a smashing financial success.
I hope that changes.
It seems to be changing, yes. Any other questions? Thank you, thank you very much. Hang on, is there any other questions, um, for the council? If there are questions, and if you can, before you give the picture, direct it to the chair, and say your name and...
Julian Payne Worthfite. So, I'm just a bit concerned with a budget issue, to spend more money, and the concern is, why would CMP take the parking anyway? What are they going to build in that parking area? It's just, you know, like, I see the need to get the money out to buy in case they need the area, what are they going to put their power plants in the middle of Hathaway?
Unfortunately, as you know, from what we're doing, banks, to get financing, it's a matter of the asset, it doesn't really matter if CMP could do. And I think the important point is, when this project first started, these were funds that were created from the project, so this project actually created these funds, and a portion of those, as part of that original agreement, was to be set aside, we are back in the project.
So, while it's not available parking, the bank might rather lend the money for the project.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is that new spending here? Is it new spending, or has it already been set aside? This is, this is money that was generated by Hathaway, that's a portion, it's set aside, just sitting away.
I think it's great. Great. How much money is it?
David.
Oh. Leo St. Peter, Wethro, Waterville. How much money is it?
Ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Ninety-nine thousand.
Is what we're holding in a reserve account.
How much is it?
Can only be used for certain things.
How much, how much do you want for that? How much are you asking for?
We actually, there's more than ninety-nine thousand dollars there, but we, but we asked for ninety-nine, because that's the current, current, the improvements we anticipate right now. I think the amount in the account right now is a hundred and thirty. Do you remember, is that, I think it's more like a hundred and fifty. More like one fifty, yeah. But it's in a reserve account, it can't be spent for other things, other than associated...
Right, right. So, we keep talking about parking, I was, I mean, this is just, with this kind of inside thing, parking is an issue, it's always an issue for people who have, you know, parking vehicles. With the Kobe thing, I was thinking, you know, they're going to build new buildings, going to go downstairs, going to build like two, three levels downstairs for cars, so we don't forget someone parking, and things parking. I want to buy a car, I want to park it. Could we do, with that little, little baseball thing, could we do, could we use some of that tech money, and raise some more money to Kobe for other people, and do a little start, start, not complete, no shutters, no shades, just start parking around it, in a little ball field area? And then we do like a glass town across to the, they do that, cities do that. Don't they do that, they call it Lockwood.
I love you, you're looking for an exit.
No, no. I really don't, I, I, no, I'm just saying, if we need, we, we, we open parking, is that correct?
Yes. There is going to be some open up on Hathaway Street, and there will be more availability, but what Hathaway needs, the Hathaway project, has to be specifically owned...
By them.
By them, in order to be able to finance and complete that development.
Right, okay, okay. Well, I'm just thinking, you know, going out there, parking around, it's possible. But it's already there, we don't see parking.
I will tell you this, with the downtown TIF being the asset, there are a lot of projects that will be happening between now and two thousand and eighteen, and so that's going to raise the amount of funds that are going into that downtown TIF. Those funds could have the potential for the city to be used to go back into infrastructure like Harwood, because they have to actually be used for specific projects in some downtown areas, so it should be a self...
I think that's a great idea, I'm all for it, I'd give the whole buck thirty.
Any other discussions on the TIF funds for Hathaway? All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Maye?
Yeah.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor DuPont?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Great, the next is order one twenty-six two zero one six.
Two three by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
In order providing for to rename, rename portions of Western Avenue.
Two two dot.
Second. And what ended up being the consensus on this?
Well, we have two suggestions. We had quite a few that were thrown out last meeting, but it seemed like we settled on two suggestions for you tonight. Not in any way, but Sister Way or Sister Court.
Is girl heads?
The suggestion in terms of why Sister is because of the proximity of Mount Mercy in the mountains, which that way, which that was thrown out earlier on, that was the least favorite, but...
Might have, might, wasn't that far many years, years ago, I mean, fifty, sixty years ago called Mount Mercy Heights?
It could have been, I don't really know.
That's not bad. Is there anybody in the audience who lives on the proposed street, you know, we had John with us here last time, that's in the audience?
I did speak with him today, Chris. Chris, yeah, and I asked him if he was okay with Sister Way or Sister Court, he said, well, I think Sister Court would be better for Sedan Street. Sometimes Way means you can go through, right, through Way, so he thought Court would be better for Sedan. But I think either one, Sister Way or Sister Street.
So, can I make an amendment to this fund? Is that what we need to do, or does it matter? Do we need to make an amendment, if we want to use Sister Court?
Yes.
Okay, can I make an amendment to change the name to Sister Court?
Second. All those in favor? All right, so I guess we just need a motion to move as amended.
Move as amended?
Second. Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Maye?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor DuPont?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Order one thirty-nine two zero one six.
Two three by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
In order providing for extension of concourse leases.
Two two dot.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Maye?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor DuPont?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Next, order one forty two zero one six.
Two three by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for approval of history renewal.
Vote two dot.
Second. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Maye?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor DuPont?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, we are moving on to new business. First, to re-business a resolution one thirty-five two zero one six. This, we do like to stand up and explain how this will work. Would you like me to fix that up?
Your choice.
Go for it.
I thought you were going to say my name. I think some councilors have expressed a wish to reconsider the vote that was taken at the last council meeting to override the mayor's veto. If that is the wish of a counselor, a motion has to be made by the counselor who voted in the majority, and can be seconded by anyone. It is debatable, and when, and when the debate is over, you then take a vote, and simple majority passes. And if, and if, in fact, this occurs, what that does is it erases the vote you took a few weeks ago, and puts it right back in the position it was in just before you took that vote. Then, there then is a motion to override the mayor's veto, it is seconded, and then you vote. If fewer than five of you vote to override the mayor's veto, then the mayor's veto is And if that, if that occurs, then the budget is open for further review. It's like the second vote you took just disappeared. And you come to move the doctor budget, somebody would second it, it's open for debate, it's open for proponent, it's open for whatever action you may wish to take.
So, just the recap?
Recap?
First, there'll be a motion to reconsider. If that passes by authority, then there will be a second motion to override the veto again. At that point, we would have that discussion, that we had a lot of discussion about last time, and, but I kind of want to say on the front end, there's been a lot of discussion along, people to be aware, there's been a lot of discussion on the council, I think we did bill, it might, if that is to occur, it's my understanding that the council would then move to set aside a time, a week from now, or a future date at least, to have another public budget workshop. At that point, we would discuss if there would be further reductions, what those reductions would be. Those motions and discussions will not happen tonight, if the council decides to reopen and take another look at it. And so, I guess that that's an important piece, that they have to remove, to have a budget workshop, at another date, other than tonight. So, I don't think...
On the re-consider.
Right.
Yes.
Right, is there a motion to reconsider resolution one thirty-five two zero one six?
Yes, I'm motion to reconsider the veto override.
Second. Is there any discussion on council for this case? All those in favor? So now, we will bring back up resolution one thirty-five two zero one six.
Moved in second, back to...
Right.
So, I move, we have a motion, okay, it's harder, second.
Is there, all right, so I guess this will be the point, if there's any discussion about overriding the veto, correct? Any discussion?
I'd like to say, a quick thing, the council voted to pass a budget which involved the tax code. Obviously, in conjunction with the reval, it didn't round the tax cut for most people. And the council heard it, and we, like you, or citizens of the town, and no one wants to put anyone in a tough spot. As I said, the last, we passed the override, there's several factors, small geographical city, more than thirty percent of which is tax exempt, the fact that we're a service center. And remember, I suggested, the governor would probably be announcing a surplus, and sure enough, this week, if you read the paper, the state has a hundred and fifty-three million dollar surplus this year, which two point, or one point nine million, which should have come to Waterville as revenue sharing, if the governor complied with a state statute. Didn't happen, folks, that's another two or three else. But we heard it, and we want to talk, and see if there aren't further cuts that we can possibly make, to mitigate some of that pressure that a lot of people...
Yeah, something I want to talk, I really want to talk about, about the idea of the face of the community, and what the property revaluation did, is shift back from our commercial sector down to a residential sector, with them being the struggling blue and white collar middle class retirees and seen as citizens living on fixed incomes in wide expanses of territory, word by word, from one corner of the state to the next. Although not all words were affected, as the majority was, it still resonated disproportionate staggering rise in property asset value, that directly attacked the very faces and souls of our community, that witnessed high, high tax bill rate drop from twenty-seven eight to twenty-four five. The calculations were illuminated and horrifying to residents as they conducted a simple rhetoric that literally focuses them to consider cutting something meaningful from their personal budgets, and are having to sell and move up altogether, effectively defunding the city, and sending it to statistical economic decline. The face of our community is a taxpayer. The family with children struggling to get by from one paycheck to the next, and providing a college education, the mother and dad retired and living within their means and on fixed, on a fixed income, the grandparents trying to remain proud and independent, and wanting to be worthy stewards of our community. And last but not least, the hardworking blue and white collar middle class resident that has, that has and continues to sacrifice... that has, that has and continues to sacrifice greater portions of his salary to keep the wheels of this great city moving forward yet again. Residential reactions to our municipal budget have resulted in a democratic and dynamic budget repeal process. Hundreds of signatures are drawn to petitions of frustrated taxpayers seeking unity and solace with other federal taxpaying residents on a scale unprecedented in our city's history. I personally commend this process. I simply ask that proper professionalism and respect be paid to every individual in this chamber tonight, whether we are councilor, manager, and/or opposing residential reactor. So much more can be accomplished by proposing facts, issuing passionate pleas from one's heart, and having honest conversation and dialogue within a spectrum of a true town hall meeting of caring and concerned proprietors of this great community we call Waterville. I urge this council to reopen the municipal budget, uphold the mayor's veto, and cut significantly yet again this budget to help alleviate the vocal and silent petition signing taxpayers' fight. Again, another substantial property tax increase comes solely on this new property revaluation. Just as important, I urge all my fellow councilors to listen with empathy to constituents and model oneself to understanding the moral implications of what this rise in taxation does to one's meager household, sometimes managed by a near threat, straining to sustain the weight of so many entities wanting to take more. Thank you for listening.
Any comments there?
Yeah. I just have a brief statement, um, because I would also, like, this may not be about the city versus the council, and it's being really divisive. I think the council has done a tremendous amount of work and done a few decisions over the last five months. It's really going over us, and it's been a hard process, and so reopening does not reflect the lack of power. Um, you know, there is some discipline that no stone is left unturned, right? So, you know, in the spirit of rechecking and in an attempt to reach consensus amongst all of us, I am, you know, with apprehension as I voice to folks returning to the budget table. And, you know, I just wanna say I stand behind my previous vote, um, but I also care about paying our members. Um, like, our public works through that without the last Thursday, helping clean up after the storm. Um, and we continue to take care of the city. They also deserve our respect and are considered efforts to get fully thoughtful to pass.
Um, just a, I, there's not one counselor sitting here at this table that doesn't care about the city. Um, we live in the city, we raise our family in the city, and I just wanna thank the council, because I think after the last meeting, it could have gotten ugly, and it could have gotten, um, very divisive, and it didn't. And I think, um, because we remained professional, and we remained, um, willing to do the work that needs to be done. I am all for people doing petitions, I signed thousands of petitions and making your voice heard, and I think it's commendable. But the shaming and the finger wagging and the recalling of names of counselors, I think, um, could could not move Waterville forward. And we are at such a pivotal moment, that I think the mayor has been ambassador for the city, um, with opening his own business, and with Paul becoming in, and with Paul, who worked at the Happy Ray Creative Center. We have such great movement going, and I wanna make sure that as a council and mayor, we do go into this budget process, um, together. And we go in and we, um, work together, we cannot unify it. Um, I do, um, also feel scared for our teachers, and scared for our police officers, and I know the school board is here today, and they work just as hard as the city has. So I just, I hope that we can all come together and know that this is not us versus them, and us versus you. This is really seven human people who have volunteered to serve, and who are trying their best for the decision for the future of Waterville, and for the Waterville community as a whole. And I hope that that is understood, and, um, and I hope that, that we can come out unified together.
I just wanted to say that, um, when I was a kid, I used to ask my father things, and he used to always tell me that Rome wasn't built in a day. And I never really got it, but I'm fifty-nine years old now, and now I get it, um, what that means. And I just hope, you know, because everything that this council has said about working together, I certainly support. And I hope the public understands that, you know, we wanna change directions, and we wanna spend less, um, but we can't get there overnight, it's gonna be a process, it's gonna take a little bit of time. But, you know, if we change direction and start moving in the other direction, things will get much better. And I, I think it's important to remember too, that a lot of what we're talking about is the short-term fix. Real fix is all the great stuff that we've been talking about, Steve, which is working with our partners and all these great projects that are gonna happen downtown, and new jobs that are coming in, and continuing to travel down those roads. That's the long-term thing, so we're talking about that. We're really trying to make sure we have the right attitude and view when we work together with the budget. As these things happen, to guide those finances through, and to make sure that we're not so quick to spend what I think we, like, maybe shouldn't be spent. And I just wanna reiterate too, I think we did think we had a pretty good budget, and the revow did hit the night, um, it was literally hours before the final vote on the budget that we were all finding out the real impact of, of the revow. You know, that is going to do to very large portion of the residential taxpayers. I know, I appreciate the council doing this together and to work, and we look forward to hopefully, um, to, so, to, uh, we believe, uh, getting back to the table where it's better. Any other comment? When we open up the public session? Alright, I'm gonna open up the public. Um, I will ask you to please come to the podium, say your name, tell us where you live. Because a lot of what we're discussing has probably been discussed before, I'm gonna try to limit to three minutes, however we get there. Let you know we need a bit of your thoughts. We'll move on.
So, I, I'm, I'm glad everyone, you know, voted to come and talk, voted again, what that's gonna make the world better. And I'm a little confused, I had a couple conversations, and I didn't think it was ever matter, but something I'm trying to do on Facebook.
Yeah.
You know?
That's me.
You did something right. You did something right.
Someone said, you know, you didn't come to all these, these budget meetings, and yada, 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 and I, and I scratched my head, and I thought, well, what is that? The city council has voted to represent us. I know, but I've had to hire a representative. And that meant, I didn't go to court, he did, because I paid him. And, you know, when you ask someone to represent you, you tell them what you want, and they go talk for you. And I thought that's what city council is supposed to do, was, you know, maybe, possibly, definitely have some more input from the, you know, from us. But when we did come here and give you input, it felt, it, it, it felt, and sometimes feelings are important. I'm not a big feeling guy, I generally don't care, you know? I really don't. But, you know, when a hundred and some odd people show up and say, "Hey, we don't want it, the mayor said we don't want it," we felt ignored, we felt like you didn't care about us, we did not feel validated. And it's nice that you're gonna go back, but my analogy is like, when you, when you get caught shoplifting outside the store, and then you're offered a pay for it, it's a little late, you know? And, and I'm, and I honestly didn't think, but I heard something a while, she come across, you know what I mean? She's come across mature, she has other words too. I, I didn't, I wasn't trying to name call anybody personally, if I did, honestly, I really didn't think I was, I'm sorry. But when I ask you to do something, you're gonna, you need to do it, especially when the mayor says, you know, "Hey, let's, let's go back and look at it." So, you know, having said that, we didn't get here in a day, we're not gonna get back in a day, but A, Ramsey, there's a lot of smart people out there that manage money. The first, the first thing you need to do needs to be the most drastic. Because you need to wait, wake up and go, "Whoa," you know, "Ten thousand dollars, that's not gonna do it." It's gotta be some drastic stuff, you know, really, and I said it before, I'll say it again, outside the blocks. Not just, "Oh, let's say five thousand, yeah, five thousand," man, it's gotta be drastic, it's something obviously, obviously that we haven't thought of before, that we haven't tried before. Because we're asking you to cut hundreds of thousands of dollars. End of discussion. Really, we want to talk.
Leo, I will say, I do hope you have a good evening.
Oh, yeah. Is that what, is that gonna, I'm not gonna be leaving now. After him, go ahead, you go first, John, and then I'm gonna go up.
Good evening, uh, my name is Scott Jones. I know a lot of people listening, a lot of people telling me. I'm in charge of the budget at Colby College, in charge of financial planning up there, and behind the scenes, handling all of the, a lot of the downtown itself, looking at the finances. I'm here because I'm a Waterville resident, I might reference some Colby things, I wanna be very clear, I'm speaking for myself, Scott Jones. I'm not speaking on behalf of the college. But clearly, um, we have some concerns here. What I wanted to say, you know, I've been, the only reason why I brought up my Colby College background is, I'm also on board of the AIC on the finance committee, I'm on the mayor's seat board on the finance committee, I've seen a lot of spreadsheets, I've been through a lot of budget reports. And what it's taught me is that I'm smart enough to know that I don't know everything. And I'm humble enough to realize and appreciate how difficult it is to put together a budget. I have three suggestions, and I'm hoping that you'll take this in the spirit that they are suggestions. And I haven't been with you every night here, going, I haven't done the five months behind the scenes, I've had offline discussions with Mike Roy. So, I am very appreciative of the work that the council has done, I'm very appreciative of what my fellow Waterville residents have up the floor. But anyway, as I've gone through, I'm a data-driven person, I look at the numbers, and I look at spreadsheets. Couple things that have popped out to me that we might consider, and if you already consider them, please just understand. We have, as I agree to tax rules, we have a real estate tax base of about, you know, six hundred and that, like, six hundred and fifty-some million dollars. At the current assessed level of twenty-seven-eighty, that comes to about seventeen million dollars a year. I read our financial statements, we have about a ninety-three percent collection rate, alright? Now, one of the things to think about, there's a couple ways that you look at taxes. There's the assessed value, you know, the revaluation, there's the rate, and the third part is what is your dilinquency? Every percentage that you increase that on a seventeen million dollar budget, it's only a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, how do you get from ninety-three to ninety-four to ninety-five? Well, it's gonna take some cost, it takes some legal fees, it takes collections, but that type of thing helps to move the needle. That's one thing to consider. Related to that, excise taxes. Now, I know that there are probably, years ago, you probably had a notification system that reminded residents to pay their car taxes and things like that. And there's costs associated with that. That's not nearly as much money, probably one point eight million dollars maybe in the budget.
Yep.
So about one point eight million dollars is the total budget. But if you could move the needle on excise taxes, that would be something else to consider. And then to Leo's point here, one of the things to consider, I was looking at our, the financial statement from F I fifteen. I was looking at the long-term debt. I know that you issued some general obligation line in two thousand and fifteen, but you have twenty-five million dollars in outstanding debt. You have principal payments of about two point two million dollars a year per this financial statement. It's at very low interest rates, but have you thought about restructuring, not just a refinance, but a restructuring? Where you delay your principal payments five, ten years. You could do it on a thirty-year note, and you amortize over the last twenty years of the note. That would buy you some room to get some of these things off the ground, and let Colby come in and build some of this stuff. Now, you can't do all of it, I know that, there's not all two point two million is gonna be eligible for refinancing. But rates are still incredibly low, you could either look at it on a taxable basis, because it gives you much more flexibility, it would still be at favorable rates. That would be something I would suggest looking at. And lastly, the fourth thing I'm gonna say, just to play, as we look through this, I'm very partial to our schools, I'm very partial to education. But last year, I've spent a lot of time working with Eric Hayley, my school board, trying to get money. I would say, if you are gonna have to look for cuts, please avoid the school. Swap strong schools, the strong communities go hand in hand. You know, a lot of the good work that Paul Boghossian and Colby are trying to do is to bring people back in here. And I think if you kneecap the schools, that undermines part of what's trying to happen here. So those are my three suggestions in the play.
Thank you.
I'm not too happy with City of Waterville. They say one thing, they do the other. And when, when we had a meeting there on the little purple bags, Mike Roy, he said that, uh, if, if we voted for purple bags, the taxes ain't gonna go up. Uh, we voted for the little purple bags, and, uh, two, three weeks after that, or whatever, this woman comes down, now I'm, uh, stop measuring the houses and all this shit and going in and out, and, uh, well, that's how I am, and, you know? Anyway, and then, you get a tax bill, and pay double your valuation. You know what I mean, it don't make sense. And now you're gonna juggle that thing around so, to make it look good, next year, they're gonna switch the thing around, and, uh, it's gonna go up again. And another thing, I watch this program on, on TV at night, and then, and these nonprofits come in here, and they want twenty-five, thirty thousand, you guys give it to them, make them go in, and, and they're not gonna do it, they hate that money. We cannot afford to take care of these other people that don't work, you know what I mean? And, uh, that's all I got to say. And, and all of that, but the way it's going now, I won't go afford to stay home, I won't go afford to go to nursing home, and the only place that's left is the cemetery, and that's tax-free, and I don't have to worry about it.
I'm Gary in Birmingham, work for a school board member. And I've heard the concerns about elderly residents on fixed spending, I'm just gonna have a hard time paying their taxes. I've heard that elderly residents who can pay their taxes are concerned about who's gonna struggle. Refer to the people who do the petition, and then not please rate the taxes that go up. At this point, my question is, is it time to do some things differently? I've talked to my, councilman Steve, no, sorry, Cindy Mount Mayeau, and about can we look at things, look at certain things and do them differently at this point? And there are things there, instead of leading both the city and the school budget. I've listened to other people, there's a lot of really good ideas out there. And people have spoken, and at this time, we have to start thinking about doing things differently than you.
Julian Payne, Word Five. One hundred and sixty signatures, and the total was collected by one walker. The residents are demanding to be heard independently and collectively after feeling that the councilors did not represent them. All of those that signed, I would estimate that only five percent opted out of signing, per street. They were jumping out of their cars to sign these petitions. While this is put in the works, it is democracy, it is not political finger wagging and shaming. Democracy walks a fine line, enjoyed by civilized societies, but their citizens, by their citizens, until they disagree with the majority vote. Then, the payership seems to be favored. Just like the Brexit, forty-eight percent crying for a re-vote, and rich business tycoons saying that the people were too sto, too stupid to make such an important decision. The same councilor thought that the residents might not have all the facts, and that common ground was needed. I find this view of the residents to be subservient. Fact, one resident, one signature equals one vote. And common ground is only found when both sides compromise. I walk the streets because I do care about Waterville, and believe strongly, what has landed on the residents' pack in one fell swoop is unjust and economic suicide. You licked the hand that feeds with the garbage bag feed, now you're starting to bite the hand that feeds. So one of the facts, over thirty-three percent of residents, and that So one of the facts, over thirty-three percent of residents, and that translates to over five thousand residents of Waterville, many of them senior citizens, are looking at tax increases in the hundreds to thousands of dollars. How could anyone have been prepared for this? Their biggest investment has been devalued like a Wall Street crash. Those homes, the thirty-three percent, are also the future of Waterville, as homes just like these live in the streets, and are haunted and scare future residents off with their property tax bill. So what are the residents saying? Well, to be honest, I'm already a little overwhelmed with all the new friends I've made in the city, so I don't need any more, I'll admit that portion. Mr. Haley, both my children attended the fine Waterville school system, and I learned through them while helping them with their homework, that you should get involved in the civic process. Vote, get involved, I thank you for teaching them that, and that's off onto me. It is because we do care about the schools that we are asking for a bigger budget trim to reduce the mill rate so Waterville continues to grow. And you have a tax base for next year's budget. This is my biggest worry, that we are outpricing ourselves. I ask the question why some areas couldn't be valued over twenty years, mainly because the city has forgotten this section of society. The seniors are now forgotten, as the majority of the signers were retired, and I'm sure you will be repossessing their homes when they cannot cuff up their last dollar. Two mil, two mil needs to be trimmed, not one. Two is the lowest number being kicked around. In translation, this will still equal to a six hundred dollar increase, thirty percent instead of nine hundred dollar increase for myself. State average mill rate is fourteen point three oh. We are fifty percent higher than the state average. This is the old, this is only the tip of the iceberg. Many of the elderly had not computed their increase yet, relatives have not felt the trickle-down effect. The people will speak again, the outages will gain momentum, and signatures will be gathered. And I have one suggestion quickly for a fix. I know Mike Roy's probably in the line, he works closely with all people here. I would suggest taking the budget to an independent firm where he has no ties and tough decisions to make. Don't go, go to Hawaii for a week, or the Bahamas, with the nice cock trees, and dump it on their desk and say, what do you recommend? Maybe they will see the trees for the wood, and then, the budget will be delivered biasally, unpartially, and it is not a school system budget, that is political, used for political means, and that is why I didn't speak of the residents' plates that spoke to me, because I won't politicize this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions in the audience?
No, deliver, restoring your budget. We all have to live within one.
Yes.
I am still going to, uh, get a petition up for a cap on the mill rate. Fifteen seemed to get people pretty excited last time, maybe that's a little, uh, off the edge, but, uh, Steve, interesting, uh, Roman, uh, on the way over here, I was thinking about, when in the Bible, it says that we're supposed to hear Caesar what Caesar's do? Some of us are feeling a little like that. You know, the people walking up and handing their little coins into the basket? Look, I see a piece of paper out here that the school budget has gone, what year, ninety-one?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, from ten million, to this year, twenty million.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Okay, I know personally, that when my son was going to school, high school, there were eight hundred in the school. Now there are, how many?
Hundred and forty-six in the last graduating class.
How many total in the school, in the high school?
Just whoever.
How many in the high school total?
Just whoever.
Yeah.
Questions, I'd be going to it.
Oh, I'm doing here, did I find out how many students are out of high school now?
We will get that information.
Oh, okay, all right, how many quarters of graduate, well, times four, yeah, thank you, five hundred and sixty. Okay, quick figuring. Um, but anyway, there just has to be a new way of looking at this, I'm sorry. The demographics of your people, now, the people are gonna be coming to work with all these jobs that might be created. I, I hear that they just started coming, they're gonna be living in town. I don't think you can count on that with the mill rate. That people are gonna be having jobs that are being created by all the projects and things that are going on? Are they really gonna live in, in, in town with the taxes the way they are? They may not, they may live, and they feel a little slower, some, some other place where the taxes, so, I don't think you can count on the fact that they're gonna be, you know, living here. And demographics, I'm getting old, there's no question about it. Ten hundred and sixty-one, opened a little ski shop on College Avenue across Main Street Lot's About, right beside Joseph Morris and Bell's Restaurant. Been here a while, and the services here are excellent. I mean, I've got no complaint with rep, you know, but when you start talking about, you know, you may not get your streets plowed, but that, you know, that really takes it right down to the, the streets have to be plowed, and it all has to fit into what you have for a tax base. And if we're getting older, and, you know, we're on social security and things like that, it's gonna be taken into consideration what the population looks like. So I just, you know, wanna thank everybody for being here, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
My name's Chris Hayes, I'm from, uh, for three, one girl's name. Looking on the room, okay, I see him, I'm just standing here, there you go. But I have to say, I'm very disappointed with the councillors. Not particularly in you guys, but the fact that you guys would let them slander our people like me, occur on your personal Facebook pages. I've seen numerous of you talking with people in the city about how we're all too lazy or too distracted, show for budget meetings. Meanwhile, I'm working sixty hours a week, I've got three kids, walls, hungry walking, three, four, I've got three hours a night coming, time to make the pull, to care for them, love them, and make sure they know their father loves them more than anything that's in the world. Meanwhile, I'm working my job to pay the city more than I am paying the bank for my home. That is wrong. That is still wrong. I can't make it to every budget meeting because I'm too busy taking care of my family. Those are our future, and it's my job to pour myself into them, everything I am. So no, I don't have time to be here, but you guys do. That's why we elected you. When we're speaking out about this stuff, you saw me walk in. It's not easy packing up two seven-month-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old into a van after dinner. I'm sure you can relate, Mr. Mayor. It is anything but easy. My son didn't want to eat there, he's screaming and crying, wanting to just cuddle with daddy. I've got a little girl who loves her daddy more than anything. When she's screaming and crying at home, and my wife's at home, they call me every morning, video chat, she stops instantly. How can I be here for a budget meeting, debate, voice my opinion, when I've got dad at home instead? That's all I've got, so.
Hi, Lisa Evans, Dana, and some of the listeners in Florida. Uh, my children are, their future is important to me, and so are your children, because I happen to work in the school district. I work on the library and at the junior high school. And I'm happy that Dana will be joining us at the high school this fall, because she will see firsthand what happens when the budget gets cut. We have more children than not, that show up to school, haven't been fed, haven't had dinner the night before, haven't had breakfast for months with them, are taking food home with them for the night, who show up without a backpack, without any kind of supplies at all. Dana will be paying for those supplies out of her salary. That's what I do, that's what all of us do, go work in the school district. I appreciate the fact that since nineteen ninety-one, the budget has gone up considerably in the school district, but so has the cost of everything, so has the cost of teaching. Students who come into Waterville, who demand and expect and are here for one purpose, services. The amount of ed techs that were in school in nineteen ninety-one run short next to nothing compared to what's in this, in our schools now. And I am saddened to think that the education is falling way down on the priorit list. And I know that Mr. Green's vision, Mr. Isro's vision, all of our vision for what we'd like to see Waterville Main Street, Waterville become economically and in pen, will not if the schools become unhealthy. And that is the direction that I'm very concerned with this. I too, my husband, I live paycheck to paycheck, but in fifteen years of living here, I can't complain about the rise in taxes, my husband and I just worry about this, because I want healthy schools. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Hang on, hang on, is there, is there anybody else who would like to say something? Sorry, yeah, so, I'm gonna make sure everybody gets jammed, and then we'll bring you back. I want to be my comment, what she said. Right, I'm gonna make sure everybody gets jammed, that's all. So you want to write something?
Hi, my name is Sandy Sullivan, and I live on Dillstown Drive. I did attend the last meeting. Uh, I must say, I'm extremely disappointed, because I felt as though the council's minds paid up before they ever entered the room, that that vote could have been taken within the first thirty seconds, and everyone in here wasted their breakfast, but they sat there. Um, I am happy that you have now decided to listen to the residents of Waterville. My one big concern is that one of the comments, I have read in the newspaper, and I know you can't believe everything you read, but one of the comments is, we're going to reopen it with the hope of bringing it down by one mil. Well, if you could reopen it and bring it down three mils, why would you stop at one? Reopen it, and if it can get down more than one mil, please have an open mind. Thank you.
And I, I will comment and say, because I don't think anybody here has their mind made up, I don't think anybody here, uh, my opinion has all the specific things in mind, so I can probably say, I think everybody will be just like.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, Hank Coria.
Whoa, he smokes. Hank Coria, workforce. Um, I did want to, like, having followed Gary and Julian, I didn't think I, I needed to, um, but I just briefly wanted to say, thank you for sending y'all over, because I think we gotta be more diplomatic, and I was really, really excited, and I stormed out of the place, and had to bump into a lot of deep nasty bulls, and help me find a way out. Um, but I just wanted to say, um, the reason I can't come on Tuesday night, the reason I don't go to the budget meeting, is because I'm working. These guys know the joke that's coming, the reason why am I working? Why I work overtime, why I'm at work overtime, it's like they're my captors. So, it is very hard to get there, and they said, watch all kinds of go, go by the wayside, you're all in shock, you know, you're mad. But what I'm really proud of, I turned up in three days, and there's some true leaders that stepped up, so you, you talk about this, and we're trying to play both the best, and I'm gonna tell you exactly, we're, we're pretty darn close. And I gotta tell you, two, three, three people in this room, a Democrat, a Republican, and an Independent, and I'm so proud of them, they came to my house, they, they, we got involved, we got this out, it was, it was amazing. And three people, and there's, you know, there's twenty-five, like, me and Norman, you know this, one, he's here, ten, twenty, he's got one fifty, one sixty. We all talked, we brought in here, and we, we looked at the hazard, and it's just one street, so as you're going down street to street to street, door to door to door, there's a lot of people, can't, people out in the case, we aren't there. I just imagine, you take thirty-six people, and you corner them, and they feel put upon that those same thirty-six people couldn't just tell somebody word three, tell somebody word two, tell somebody, if you know what I'm saying, elections are happening. And I think that we, we hit a regular. So, I, I guess what I'm gonna say is, I'm just gonna probably thank you for sending y'all over, and, and relooking at this. Um, but people, people will push back, and, and when I talked to Mr. Haley's predecessor years ago, when I was involved with it, uh, in the nineties, the only thing I got from the city department heads is revenue, 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 hey, well, the, well, the new governor's gonna cut this, or this, is revenue, you know, we never will get suspended. Leo comes in, Leo comes in here, holding his hat, and he doesn't wanna say, because he's the nicest guy you've ever met, one of the hardest-working people you've ever met, and we just kinda slapped him down, I mean, it's, it's, it's sad, I'll say, I mean, because there's probably gonna be a forced sale sign on my wall, and it's sad. Um, but I hate to say it, but if you don't have a revenue problem, you have a spending problem. And I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about a deep-time school, but the school is like the fat guy in the treadmill. If Leo got in the treadmill and ran for a month, he might lose a pound. I got in the treadmill and ran for a month, I'm gonna lose twenty or thirty pounds. So it's, it, it, everybody has to have skin in the game, and see, I mean, stuff like schools, absolutely, nobody's saying that, nobody's saying it, just, but everybody has to have skin in the game. So, if we're not here, it's because we're working overtime, because we're working hard too, and when your job is hard, it's not, it's just a vivid play, it's not just appeasing somebody else who's maybe dating or living with, it's, it's, it's tough, but that's why you ran. And it's, it's gonna be tough, but you gotta make the tough cuts. That's it, thank you.
You sure?
Yes.
It's on me, yeah? It's on me, yeah? So, uh, I, I really like the school, but I just wanna say, I like the school a lot. My, my best memory growing up on Sixth Street, uh, is, uh, very great oxygen. Everyone was on my side. You know, I, I had a picture on my refrigerator of me holding a Shungha Reese fire, I didn't have a Shungha, but I just walked on that corner street, and I had no idea, you know, and I, I still look forward to mine, you know, I don't copy it, because he was nice to me and my parents. And that's hard, it's sad. Teachers are awesome, schools are needed, you know? The father and father, they said that, I believe that. Mothers and fathers, honestly, this is a large percentage that aren't being adopted anymore, so I'm opening my, the school's in money, I totally get it, but I'm very frustrated, and, and Lisa. All right. Libraries, I love to read, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just, you're just getting a bit off the menu, I'm not gonna stop. Reading is way important. I'm not really smart, but I, I read a lot, yeah.
I just wanna make sure that we're following some kind of order.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think I'm that long, you guys think I'm long? So, school, I, yeah, I think we can cut the schools without cutting teachers, or without the, this is, maybe the life of the field aren't on so long, or maybe, I don't know, but creative stuff, but I don't think anybody here said, let's give her eight teachers, or let's give her, you know.
Ed techs, or.
You know, I don't know what it is, but I, I'm for schools, but creative, creative.
It's okay to ask questions, and nobody should, I mean, like, they can't ask questions on topic, just because it's an on-topic day about to ask, no, pardon. I'm gonna wrap up the debate, and also we can move on.
Is that moved over, Ryan, from here?
Yes, yes, so, um, at this point, we'll take a roll call to send, if you are voting in favor of your If you vote in favor, if your hand goes up on the first round, and all of us in favor, that means you don't want to go back and look at the budget. When she says opposed, if you hold your hand up, that means you do want to go back to the table.
We are voting on whether we want to override the veto.
Right.
Right. So if we override the veto, we vote in favor, if we want, we either decide that we vote not in favor, opposed.
Right, so in this case, both are in the back.
Anybody want to roll call or me?
Well, resolution, this is just, this is just all of us.
Show hands.
Okay, all of those in favor. Opposed. And at this point, we have a motion to create a day, certain?
Motion to table to artist.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. We will be.
We have a motion to adopt the budget. Okay. You're basically back to where you were after you had your first read, you voted to adopt the budget, as we seconded, and it's open for postponement, for amendments, or whatever. You may wish.
Motion to adopt.
Sir? Motion to table to sixteen.
Sir.
All of those in favor? That would be the change, go on to the topic.
My, my second.
We're talking about.
Yeah. We think we made the eighth or.
On your date?
For workshop.
That's what I suggest, the next Monday night, weeknight, right here, I'll let you workshop time when you can spend as much time as you need to go over the different departments and with no pressure to vote that night, but on sixteen, when you could take a vote, maintain this for the budget. At next Monday, we'll leave your workshop.
Six or five, sir?
Whatever you'd like, six or seven.
Six or.
Six or.
Six or.
Six.
Six.
It's not one of those folks who have voice, you know, to people that are going to engage, I mean, no one can be everyone's schedule.
But the email, we can read, but the email, the letters have meaning, they have a longer time.
Yeah, you say, this is a good point, because, you know, you can always email your councilors. I know I talked to Councilor Boucher after, you know, a lot of people, you say, go email the mayor or the city manager, but they forget the city councilor, because they don't, you heard, if you're.
I am, I am, I started calling you stupid just now, okay? I object to that.
I just said that's stupid.
It was a casual joke saying about AM or PM. I never use verbs that anyone's stupid, I'd like an apology.
I apologize.
Thank you. That's our fault for, thank you.
So we have, yeah, so definitely email our councilors and things like that.
I know I'm stupid.
That's a good point because, you know, Nick was telling me, I'm getting all these emails, there are fifty emails, and I'm like, I've gotten three and I had one on the phone. So it is important to figure out who your counselor is and have a relationship with them and call them, talk to them and ask questions because you see the quality, yeah, some of the.
All right. All right, we're moving on to resolution one forty-two two zero one six.
We have a little ride for.
Yes, we're waiting for it to hear.
Motion to review the panel.
All in favor?
Six or. Six or.
Channel on.
Six or. Five twenty-three, six or seven, seven or seven.
Second, uh, what's your move?
All of those in favor? To declare an emergency to reserve public housing.
No.
There's a group in the section, we're all in favor. And that just order one forty-two two zero one six.
We'll read the panel on that.
All in favor?
In order of the body for emergency funding for city and school operations.
And that just as a reminder, the charter requires that this, so if there's going to be approved, has to be announced, okay? Is it going to be a roll call or just all?
Roll call. Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Rinsler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeum?
Yes.
Counselor Donald?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
Go to seven in favorites, zero votes.
I do not have anything under the manager's report, but there's.
Or ask a question or, or, to the company. And we want to pay here, to hear how many people are because we're getting them, but we have, we have no power to come to this, that's a company, there are brothers and sisters that are going to be here at some point to hear from brothers and sisters, I know they can, but if they didn't time or if it's their job, we can't really listen to them.
I understand, I don't think anyone, I already thought their value, I think everyone has their value.
The other thing, we had an opportunity to visit and dispute them, so they have been able to hear the residents. And the order.
Yeah, they spent the past month with individual interviews.
Right, but I want to say what you said, that one, when you go to the city council meeting to be able to answer questions, I think that that's a lot.
No, if I said, the company, I'm sorry, I might have been fall or excessive. But they conducted, I think, close to three hundred and fifty of interviews with people that come in and questioned.
Do we have, I'm sure if you ever get a nominee, the government's never changed, do you look at their name?
Did Paul can tell us that next Monday night? He's still waiting to get the final report. From, I think, actually, the results came today, and so he's going through them, because they did manage adjustments as a result of three hundred and fifty different interviews that they helped, they did make adjustments here and there, but Paul will be one to ask us.
But wouldn't the individual taxpayer, we need to present, grant you a better evaluation, but he's not going to, oh, truly, if I can still be able to do that. So it's hiding everything.
No, hiding everything. I guess there is, I think later this week, I think later this week, anybody could find out, if changes were made to their value, like as a result of coming in, there's a lot of people.
They sent a letter, they said they don't want to send another.
I saw it, I can't even go up and back.
Yes, my name's Don Ashen from Ward Two. This entire situation has so many different dynamics that are based on a lot of feelings that are, don't have a lot of information backing them up. And so I was one of them. I started looking in the charter and I couldn't find a language that actually says how the evaluation takes place. It gave me a state reference to the state constitution. I went to that, I looked at it, and the language was not very clear to me, so I'm not actually sure how the evaluation as a citizen takes place. And all I can say is that it was neglected for so many years, either deliberately or not deliberately, there should be something in the charter that kicks in very clear language about it needs to be done. So when we do have these situations of reevaluation, they're much smaller increments because I guess, you know, I got hit pretty hard as well. And it would be much preferred if it was done in a small increments and just finish up. I don't know, you know, maybe it's in the air, the governor neglecting his responsibilities and following the constitution of the state. Does the city, what will happen in the city of Waterville if we say, well, take the evaluation, but we're, we're going to implement it over three or four years and do what you want? And I don't know enough about it to see whether that is feasible, what would happen to us if we said, no, we're going to do it incrementally because it's so large.
I actually asked that question because there are other states that do stagger increases by stagger in the years, so that you're still getting what you need, but it's less burdened states out of time, whether it's before or by a policy, there's a state constitutional law that's in your model that being unconstitutional for us to stagger.
And once we said, have the state, have the state, they just call?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's never deferred till.
What I love, Don, is if you are one of the lucky ones, commercial property workers whose value was eager, you would immediately run into the assessment office and say, whoa, whoa, they reported from a certified broker saying my property did not work, what do you think, charging taxes on it? And they would have to, you do. So we all can implement it, everyone who's. Well, no, I'm not suggesting not implementing it, but if, I mean, in discussions about this, at the very minimum, it needs to be written into the charter that it's done like folklore. And we're not going to allow this to happen again.
I agree, because you guys are very angry at us, and I'm angry at the council mayor ten years ago, possibly, or, why, why was it kicked down now?
Well, that's, that's why I think if it's in the charter, it can't, that can't happen. It has to be implemented or you're ignoring the charter.
What was it about to do a week out? Three hundred and fifty? Three hundred and five. Okay. I don't have no idea, that's why I keep it, we're trying to pull points to the end.
Thank you. My turn, my question.
Yeah, it's a good idea, so we're not, you're saying you're not allowed to do this to people, but there's more than one way to handle it. You can take the full amount of taxes and then give a twenty or thirty percent back to the residents, saying it's a, it's a thank you for living in Waterville, or it's a, you know, a long-serving resident in Waterville. We can get around to the root causes if we don't have. And, you know, is this mine or shoe? We're not angry, we're just doing the democratic process. I've never insulted you, scolded you.
Really?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're not angry, we're just doing the process.
Actually, you all need to realize that we are, you know, sitting here.
We know that, we know.
You're not just on that door.
When I got my safety shoes, not on that door, I was at the council. And if I didn't think that I'm capable of signing or really informed, and even when they approached me, I thanked them, posted the property you were asking, I thanked them, shook their head and said, this is the opposite, we're not angry.
We can take that, all of them, we're here in the meeting and everybody.